Was two million, three hundred thirty-five thousand, two hundred ten dollars. The receipts for January, four hundred sixty-four thousand, one hundred dollars, left the checks to others, two hundred fifty-two thousand, two hundred one dollars. So we got two hundred and eleven thousand, eight hundred ninety-nine dollars left from our receipts to add to our income from our taxes, which gave us a total revenue of two million, five hundred forty-seven thousand, one hundred ten dollars. Our expenses, accounts payable, six hundred ninety-seven thousand, three hundred thirty-two dollars. Our payroll, two hundred ninety-three thousand, three hundred thirteen dollars. And return checks, five thousand, four hundred ninety-nine dollars. Total expenses for January, nine hundred ninety-six thousand, one hundred forty-five dollars. Which adds up to a positive bank balance as of January thirty-first of one million, five hundred twenty-two thousand, three hundred ninety-five dollars. So our difference, as you can see from the income and expenses, we had a plus of one million, five hundred fifty thousand, nine hundred sixty-five dollars, but we had to cover that deficit, twenty-eight thousand, five hundred sixty-nine dollars, using the thirty-first balance. So that's how we ended up with one million, five hundred twenty-two thousand, three hundred ninety-five dollars. And then if you look at your yearly comparing last year to this year. You'll see the same information is just broken down a little different and showing you the difference in comparing it last year for all of the months as the month right now.
We're actually up this month about five hundred thousand more than last year. Or right at four hundred something thousand. Better than last year. We're looking at the body at these mistakes. Does Henry got that thing?
There's a, there's a, you only want, with December, January, but look at January. But I've got to spread that one million, five hundred twenty-two thousand, three hundred ninety-five dollars that's got spread, you know, that's a lapse.
But if you look, we served a big team last year. I mean, we, this year we were over twenty-eight thousand, five sixty-nine hundred, and last year we were seven hundred and forty-six thousand, two hundred eighty-seven seven. The whole last compared to the twenty thousand this year, so something kind of improved that there was.
It is, um, anything on what we're paying.
That's good, I would say, very good.
All things about our expenses, that's the long of the stuff.
That's true, for you, for you, we offer a very good report.
We have to check it with our expenses coming out, find checks, and uh, maybe to see where we are, where we stand. Over.
Um, look at these two, I mean, January, excuse me, definitely had five weeks in January, so I'm trying to figure out. So it was up with them, pay, I kept saying the payroll was up on them.
We had three payroll.
Three payroll, that's why I was wondering why.
January.
Three, compared to one eighty-five the last previous month, so I thought that five weeks in that. You're glad you came in this month, and now that you can hear that.
I had vertigo. I had all intentions of being here February the third, I think that was the worst day I have had in a long. I don't know if any of you's ever had it, but I was, I was toiling and toiling and everything else was going with it, so I then I stood up there.
Also, Mr. Johnson, if you remember, not this last week, I was going in, one before that, I asked you your draft letter out loud to the public. And I asked you then if you would, unless I have a copy of that and a copy of your response, and you made a response, did you?
I have not.
Because I was sent to interconference.
But hey, their taxes, and I wanted to get some special time, we've had an auditorium, trying to get to audit them, I have been working with them. Just so January has been with the Warcraft deal has changed. My file for January for reports was that big, and I just filed it away, I think it was maybe last Thursday or Friday, but.
So we will get it as soon as you do it, you'll get us a copy of that.
I'll, I'll, I'm gonna work on that. Revenue.
Looking at the, trying to recap the January, I've seen you collect seven million, fifteen thousand dollars tax, if that correct? And then this tax transfer check, five million something. Is there a breakdown of that five million something?
That shows you, you do have checks.
And then, January, go schools away.
The schools, the towns, they get a big portion. I write a check to the force, well, District One and Two operating, and I have the two bond accounts to pay their debt service. And four towns, Danberg, Denmark, Oa, and Earhart. And fire service, capital needs reserve account, and the hospital line for that debt. And then the solid waste.
Well, out of seven million, fifteen thousand, the only thing that will come to the county is that two million and a half.
Not even, yeah, two million, three hundred thirty-five thousand, if I count you.
So, so pretty much out of every three hours, the basic, you only get one of the counties. That's like, that's like one third when you're paying something like that.
Now, also that bond account, they extended, is that what you paid? For one point four million for the, for District One, and the one point three, seven, five, seven million for District Two, did I say that right?
We're looking at two, four.
Yep. It looks like total District, total just for District Two, which is Denmark, three point one million. And then it looks like, for Denver, one, it was three point five million. But that's five million I'm gonna throw in there, that was two schools.
Alright, out of January, tax transfer checks. District One operating got one million, four hundred sixty-four thousand, eighty-seven dollars. District One bond account, then I have to deposit that to pay for their debt service, six hundred eighty-one thousand, nine hundred forty-eight dollars.
That adds to two million, nine three, right? That was, that was a good time.
That's two million, one hundred forty-six thousand, thirty-five dollars. Alright, District Two operating got one million, three hundred.
Bond account, total per banking deposit transfer, that's three million, what is that one? A three point five million. That's your total that they got for District One. Right here, you're showing your district operating deposits, your district bond account statement, and then you're showing the funds department transfer of two point nine three. Then you come back down here to the bond account, total per banking, deposit transfer, three point five million for District One. That's one that you want to say, we do get a lot of money, like I said, transfer five to one, and two eighty, nothing, three point three, being three five.
You're saying three point five, is that what you're?
Yeah, you got a, a bond account total, three, three point five, five, seven.
That's what's in the bank, with three million.
Okay, that's, well, that's what you had to take out of there, that's what you take in, that's what you had to put in, that's that three million dollars, right?
No, I put in the two million, one hundred forty-six thousand, thirty-five.
Oh, with the bottom down here, okay, I was wondering what you do, well, it's staying different of time.
It's just showing what's deposit in transit, like I said. The two million, one hundred forty-six thousand, thirty-five, that, that part of the bank, because it was for January, it's deposit in transit.
That's what I'm saying, so that's the operations in the bond that, that's the, that's the.
I got, yeah, operations.
Yeah, I was getting, we're just, we're sticking, that's two whole one million there, I was saying. So they got one point nine seven six, two twenty-six point sixty-nine, they almost got two millions for District Two, right? So totally, they got about almost four million dollars out of seven. Well, actually, yeah, four million, and it might have been a million for the tables, right?
The town's got two hundred thirty-six thousand, one hundred seventeen dollars.
All together? So the rest of that five million, the way it got five million, the rest of that's coming from the school business, right?
The, the rest, the five hundred and sixty-four thousand went to the fire service, catering, and hospital line.
And that is all in there?
Yes, all in there.
But anyway, you look at the schools, they got the four million dollars out of it, close to it.
Well, the, the chip for comment. When Thomas Grove was the resident, if you tried to consolidate the group, it was failed. So, so what we have, two nations intersect in this county. Western side wants that school, and eastern side wants that school, and that's where all the money is going. So he, he had the right idea, but. Well, another thing, he's been, uh, the, 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 tried to get the regional water, too, but then, then hooked, like, it shouldn't have been abandoned, uh, but it was abandoned. Because had we got that in place, what happened was they didn't have all the sales at the table. And then one of this system to take over, and that's been six fifty of the money. But had they got all the sales to the table, it probably could have been a system where each town would have contributed to administration of it, but that didn't happen. If that had happened, it wouldn't have happened, we'd have had it with Denmark and Water Street. And that big industry that will have about four hundred employees, it probably would have been higher by now. But anyway, I just, good for coming.
Do you ever have a question, a question for you to answer? Thank you for that. Okay, next, an update, Denver County financial report. Financial register, Thomas, Tom, and controller, Ginn, Smith.
Good evening, Councilwoman, thank you for having me here. Before you like this, have the month of January fourth, of the current financial, um, system, general fund, special revenue, and enterprise funding. As out of that state of January, is always a good big collection month for, starting with general fund. Our total budget revenue for FY twenty, as you should know, seven million, nine, nine hundred sixty-three thousand, five ninety. And actual revenues collected through January twenty twenty now stands at five million, six hundred and sixty-six thousand, one thirty-two. This represents seventy-one point fifteen percent of budget amount, which is an increase in revenue of about two million, one hundred twenty-four dollars, fifty-six dollars from the previous month reported. On the expenses side, general fund department has collectively spent fifty-one point five six percent of the budget at four million, one hundred and six thousand, eighty-two. That's, um, leaving revenue exceeding expenses year-to-date by one million, five hundred and sixty thousand, forty-nine dollars. Moving on to discuss revenue funds, position of nine-one-one, registered management, organization, and rural fire service. Overall, the revenues in these funds through January are at six hundred and forty-two thousand, three sixteen, which represents fifty-six point twenty-two percent of the budget amount of one million, one hundred forty-two thousand, five hundred. On the expenses side, all three of these departments have collectively spent five hundred and thirty-two thousand, nine eighty-nine, and are within expected level of forty-six, forty-sixty-five percent. The revenues exceed expenses currently year-to-date in, in special revenue by one hundred and nine thousand, three twenty-seven. Uh, moving on to the enterprise funds, solid waste, our budget revenues for landfill solid waste, department are at one million, five hundred fourteen thousand, one twenty. And through January twenty twenty, we have collected seven hundred and fifty-six thousand, four hundred dollars, representing fifty point six two percent of the handling budget. On the expenses side, the enterprise fund has spent forty point one four percent of the January year-to-date total of six hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Uh, the revenues also exceed the expenses by one hundred fifteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-two dollars in solid waste. So overall, I tell you why our department continues to operate within budget, and we've been expected down, uh, January, definitely was a big collection month, as you always do, of course. I would entertain the question I have here.
Are there bonds? Have a quick.
I'm looking at, in fact, fun. And then, then two days, that's, we're in eighth month of, of this year, right? We're in eighth month, you're like.
We're marching to ninth month, this is, this is, I'm reporting this sixth month for this report.
Oh, we're here before the fifth month, okay.
It's the seventh month. Seventh month.
Well, I was running behind on the enterprise fund there. We're here, so that's the second time.
Oh, we're running behind, what?
Enterprise fund, total as of revenue.
No, that's usually. Since the sixth month, I think that, yeah.
Oh, this is sixth month, the seventh month.
So we're a little short, yeah.
Thank you, Tom. Next, we'll have an overview of Denver County operations, Ministry, Joey Kirk.
Yeah, Jim.
Thank you. Oh, sorry.
These are all about that. Arms to the expenses.
Good evening, Council. Mr. President, handing you a summary, and we look at this from time to time, I thought it might be a good idea to look at it tonight. And the treasurer presents you with the activities and the handling, uh, what is called the county regular account, which is the main operator of the county. But there are, um, but there are other accounts, bank accounts, that the county uses to pay its bills as well. And so I think it's important to look at all the accounts at the moment. What's it got in your hand, there's three pages, and the top page is just a summary. And I'm comparing January of twenty nineteen to January of twenty twenty balance on this page. And you'll see I've got their whole council list, it would have the county payable clearing account, and the capital reserve fund, the United One Trade Fund, the rural fire service, payroll clearing account, uh, the West Landville account, and then the county regular account. And that, um, that's what the treasurer just gets reported on, the county regular. Also, it's important to know that we have receipts on hand, that have not been deposited at the end of the month, and of course, in January, that, that's a pretty big number. And, and I also throw in the property tax rollover back account and total four D. Of all these accounts, one account that the county has payroll expenses in and uses to pay county payables. Now, again, remember that the, uh, for ease of administration, the county uses that county regular account to pay all the payroll and to pay most of the county payable bills, that's just to make it easier. And from time to time during the year, Alex will reimburse the county's general fund from these other accounts, where they're share of the county's payable. Uh, for example, if you just look at follow-away's landfill, that's a pretty healthy balance in there, and I don't think we've made, we made new transfers in follow-away's landfill, okay. So follow-away's landfill budget, their budget's around a million, two every year. So all your law assistance, the county's general fund has been paying employees of the follow-away, and has also been paying PDA account payable, the operating expenses of the county's fund. So we're coming up on the time where I'm gonna do my measured calculations and let Alex know what my estimate is of what these other funds owe by the general fund. So I know all this, you know, you're trying to say over and over, but just better repeat it. And, um, as Mr. Kiner noticed earlier, we are up over last year, in January of twenty nineteen, we had four million, three thousand, six hundred and three dollars in these accounts. In January of twenty twenty, this year, we had forty thousand, five hundred eighty-four thousand, two hundred and forty-nine. So that is an increase of five hundred eighty thousand, six hundred and forty-six. And I threw in two other sheets, they're the, the legal side sheets in the package. And this is it, this is all the accounts that the county has, um, that Alex may counties, and I get these from her detailed reports that she gives to me. So that's just there for your reference, so that you can see from one year to the next, how the balance is, and these funds change over time, and they, and they do change. There's a couple of new accounts probably need to be aware of. Uh, look on the, the loan sheet, that's titled this year, twenty twenty. And you'll notice, uh, number twenty, my twenty, the account name is USDA loan reserve. Not much money in there, but I wanted to explain why that's there. That's three thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven dollars. And with these USDA loans, they require the county to set aside one tenth of payment every year. And so that's three thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven, was the requirement we needed to have on hand for this full year ending June thirty, twenty nineteen. It amounts to about eighteen hundred and nineteen hundred dollars there for this full year. And between now and June thirty, twenty twenty, we'll, we'll put another eighteen hundred and nineteen hundred dollars in there, that's just a requirement of the, of that loan. And, uh, the thinking is that the term, at the end of the term of the loan, you basically have your last payment saved up, so that's the logic behind that. You'll also see, um, my number twenty-one, we titled it VHEC help department project grant. And that was a new account that Alex established, that was a two hundred fifty thousand dollar grant that the county received from VHEC for part of the renovation to the, um, hospital down there. So you'll see, uh, that'd be something you'll want to look at from time to time, so time that money we spent down, we'll be spending for construction, and that's the purpose of it. And, um, again, just notice that receipt's on hand, but not yet deposited. And, um, you know, I know in December, uh, and this Alex gave a report, and she said we have a negative balance of twenty-eight thousand, five hundred sixty-nine. But we also need to understand that we also have seven hundred fifty-six thousand dollars cash on hand, but haven't made this bank yet. So there's a lot of, a lot of moving parts in this, and so I think you can just focus on what the camp, you missed in our picture. So what I'm hoping to present is a bigger picture than you look at. And I'm happy to answer questions. Yes, sir. I have a question.
You know, on this loan sheet.
Yes, sir.
Count number fourteen, special account.
Okay.
Exactly where they're at.
That originated back, I think, in twenty twelve, when the county borrowed money, and now stop me if I go off the path here. The county, county borrowed money for the hospital, we issued a bond anticipation note, but we didn't spend it all. And so effectively, that's the savings account now, that's the fund balance account. Am I right on that? So, so that account is part of the county's general fund, fund balance, and at that point in time, it was just a special, I guess, facility, this, this. This is our use account. Any questions?
We just, we just up, I mean, I'm pretty good at increase the five fifty, five point six, our second point. I said I'm black, if I'm gonna test that, just, oh, we need to be happy about it. That's what, that's what, I think we need to get the treasurer up top before we get the tax rate. I'm just gonna say that, I think we need to wait till you take it over to one, and then the thousand and all, that's what I'm saying.
Oh, gee. First one sheet, you got the receipt on hand, but not yet deposited. We didn't, I don't know, tell us about that.
The receipt on hand, but not yet deposited, that's just money that has come into the treasurer's department, and it could be taxes, it could be fees, it could be, uh, money coming from the city. And it, it could, uh, could be any kind of revenue that's come in, and we just didn't have time to get it in the bank, or the bank was there.
Thirty first, in the bank on the thirty first.
But I'm saying, that's one thing in you, one point nine million and two point one, is that receipt on hand or no?
That's the school district two.
That's, I'm gonna say, that's on hand, but, okay.
There's, there's three there, receipt on hand, but you not get deposited down the county, that's the county's money. And then the other two is school district one and school district two.
So according to that, then you can add that six hundred sixty-three value, eight ninety-nine, to what she, what she reported earlier?
No, no. All of that, county regular fund, about a hundred thousand of that, is up, and the rest of it is for the back end. That's what I was trying to explain about the tax transfer check.
They still a hundred thousand more, if you're good, you think.
But not all of that goes to regular fund.
That's not bad at all.
Mr. Paul, did you finish your question?
One more question, first thing, Dan, Adam. Twenty-three thousand, twenty-six next season, you got two hundred thousand, all in the fall. Did it put the cut through? Not, not interest accumulated or something?
We get the interest check every month, that was, that was done way back when, they wanted to get the interest used, rather than letting it accumulate. So I, I applied interest on home federal and stuff at that every month, in the regular fund.
Sure.
Well, actually, we didn't deposit it, really, really quick, that cash or more, whatever, comparing that, uh, December at seven fifty-six, over fifty-eight, did it cause any yet?
That's true, but.
Actually, not a hundred thousand, I'm pretty good, but it's, that could be two hundred thousand or more.
And if you look back on the print this year, I mean, that's not uncommon, uh, thing that happens, if you look back on the, the last sheet, this year, twenty nineteen sheet, you'll see comparable amounts that, um, are world hand, but not get deposited.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. We have an overview of the county operations.
Okay, I have a few things I want to say. What Frank, you guys, we're still being so responsive, uh, so the last few weeks, there are, and all the laws, which you know they were, I appreciate it very much, helping understand, I think, according to all the hard help, which you helped sort of better, that's broken for. It's open now, and we're, of course, if we're using, I think, most people are going in, they're, they're buying the residence there, so we've got to continue to do that, everyone, have growth disorder, and sound, yeah, support. Thank you, Dan.
Well, I feel like I'm spoiled, I can.
Yeah, it has, yeah, and, uh, Palmer, thank you for coming tonight, we appreciate it very much.
Thank you. The, uh, tomorrow, at ten o'clock, we've got broadband experts to be here, Jim, I want to pronounce it, Swat, Swatler, Jim. He, uh, his job, he was commissioned to develop maps of broadband throughout, all across South Carolina, to show which areas have it, which areas don't have it. And he, he is pretty much a next world member of county, he knows where we have, where it's strong, where it's not strong. We're gonna be here to meet tomorrow with many leaders and council members, that, uh, he's having his, with the people, with Andy, and I'd like to invite the other council members, if y'all can come tomorrow, we have some openings. I'd like to invite the other council members, if y'all can come tomorrow, we have some openings, we'll speak.